So at this time, I call the meeting to order and I ask that we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paulina Frye.
Here.
John Green.
Here.
Scott Latham.
Here.
Brian Tobin.
Here.
Tom Grattan.
Here.
In the event of an emergency, everyone can exit through that door inside parking lot. Do not attempt to leave in your automobile since this may cause traffic problems and block incoming emergency vehicles. At this time, I'm going to administer the oath of office to Scott Latham and Thomas Grattan. Scott, we'll start with you. That's all right. I, Scott Latham.
I, Scott Latham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of member.
The duties of member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the South Old Union Free School District.
Of the South Old Union Free School District.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I, Thomas Grattan.
I, Thomas Grattan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of member.
The duties of member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the South Old Union Free School District.
Of the South Old Union Free School District.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Who's next, right?
I did.
That's okay. I, Andrew Moore.
I, Andrew Moore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I support the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties superintendent.
The duties superintendent.
Of the South Old Union Free School District.
Of the South Old Union Free School District.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
What would happen if we hired a superintendent who refused to be sworn in? Would that be a contract break?
That's a good question.
Probably.
You know, you do the first year and then, nah, I'm not taking it.
Can the state get involved?
Like it or not?
No. Never have, never will.
If somebody else doesn't want it, if somebody else wants it, they can have at it.
So.
It's hard.
At this time, we'll take nominations for the President of the Board. Paulina Frye, President.
I nominate, I second that nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, it's your meeting now.
You did a great job.
Nominations for Vice President of the Board.
If anybody else wants to be Vice President, I'm fine with that. If people would like me to continue to be Vice President, I'm fine with that. It doesn't matter to me. That's all I'll say.
Nominate, John.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Administration, Patty.
Lot of class here.
Tom Grattan. I, Paulina Frye.
I, Paulina Frye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of President.
The duties of President.
Of the Board of Education.
The Board of Education.
Of the South Old Union Free School.
Of the South Old Union Free School District.
According to the best of my abilities. Right there. It doesn't matter what. Thank you. I, John Green.
I, John Green.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Vice President.
The duties of Vice President.
Of the Board of Education.
The Board of Education.
Of the South Old Union Free School District.
The South Old Union Free School District.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you.
So then, I need a motion, right? For the authorization of the Vice President to act in legal matters in absence of the President.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Appointment of officers. District Treasurer, Jenny.
Good luck.
Shella.
Shella. Clerk of the Board, Patricia De Gregorio. Claims Auditor, Serene and Associates. Oath of Office Administrator, Patricia De Gregorio and Jenny.
Shella.
Shella. Board of Registars, Jennifer Brewer, Patty De Gregorio. Is there a motion to accept these appointment of officers?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The other appointments, I'm just going to read through them as quickly.
My oath.
Oh.
Let me do that quick.
For which one?
Both Office Administrators to me.
I thought that came somewhere, because where does the, uh...
Somebody has to...
The money got, you know, for Chuck and the treasurer.
Bonding is later.
The bonding was later.
Oh, okay, okay. I guess that's what I...
I, Patricia De Gregorio.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of District Clerk of the South Old Union Free School District, according to the best of my abilities.
Very impressive. Very impressive, very impressive.
They should be able to do it after 26 years.
Our other appointments for this upcoming school year, school physicians will be Pecanic Bay Primary Medical, school attorneys, Ingram and Smith, school architect is Michael Guido, Architect, bond attorneys, Hawkins, Dellafield and Wood, fiscal advisors, Monistat Services, independent auditors, Orklin and Donasky, L.L.P. Let's do that bunch first, right? I think that's how we... A motion to accept those?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tom, if you have any questions, just stop us and ask, please.
Got it.
Extra Classroom Activity Funds, grades K through six, Chief Faculty Advisors, Ellen Waldron O'Neil, grades seven through 12, Chief Faculty Advisors, Terrence Rush, grades seven through 12, Central Treasurers, Eric Keel, Junior/Senior High Activities, Ambassador Club, Early Act, High School Student Council, International Club, Junior High Yearbook, Safer, Virtual Enterprise, Class of 2023, 2024, 2025, 2026, and 2027. Wow. Drama Club, First Robotics Club, Interact, Junior High Student Council, National Honor Society, South Old United, The Snuff Box, which is the high school yearbook, and the elementary activities is the Drama Club. Are there any questions or comments about those activities? Motion to accept?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our hearing officers, they will, do I do these separately, Patty, or can I do...
No, actually, you could do them...
Seven point eight, seven point nine.
Yeah.
Seven, ten.
You could do them all at once, you don't have to do them all, and you don't have to read them, because everybody has to.
Right, so just seven point eight, seven point nine, seven point 10, and seven point 11, which are the list of our hearing officers, our Committee on Special Education, our Committee on Preschool Special Education, and our Readoption of Nassau and Suffolk County List of Pre-approved Preschool Programs for three- and four-year-olds. Is there a motion to accept those?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Records, well, I'll just read these and then we'll vote on these. Records Access Officer, Patricia De Gregorio, Foils Appeals Officer, Dr. Anthony Morrow, Records Management Officer, Patricia De Gregorio, Asbestos Designees, Anthony Dragone, 504 Accommodation Compliance Officers, Dr. Lisa Simonetti, Title Nine Officer, Dr. Anthony Morrow, Sexual Harassment Officer, Dr. Anthony Morrow, Purchasing Agent, Charles Scheid, Data Privacy Officer, Charles Scheid. Any questions about those positions? A motion to accept?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, committees.
Other policy?
I'll be with you. You want to chair, right, Scott?
Sure.
Finance, Brian, I think you're on it now.
I am.
Do you want to think it's something that Tom should do as a new board member with you? I mean, what do you think?
But I didn't when I came in, yeah.
And I know I came in and learned a lot doing that.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't require a great deal of time.
Finance?
Yeah.
That's fine.
You want to share?
Sure.
Is that good with you guys down there?
Sure.
Building Committee. It's you as the Chair and I think Brian as the Member.
Fine with that.
You good with that, Brian?
Sure. And then Scott and I will stay on the negotiating team?
Yes, who's the Chair on that?
If you guys don't want to do that pleasant job?
I'll do it, it's fine.
Scott and John, right?
And Tom, if you want to sit on any of these to learn anything about them, feel free, or if there's any other committees during the year that we should have.
Well, when things are rolling and something's going on, you let me know and I'll be there.
Perfect. Is there a motion to accept those board committees?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our official bank depositories, All Funds Dime Savings Bank, Bank of America, Capital One Bank, and Bank of New York. Is there even a Bank of New York out here any longer?
You know, I think that's more used for collateral.
Oh, okay, okay. And then we've got the class accounts. All right, so we'll do, those are the bank things, right? Those two?
Well, you want to do all of eight, because that's all...
Because, well, yeah, I guess the, okay, the meetings will be, which we actually approve in when we get to our regular meeting, so it's kind of, yeah, okay.
I have it set up.
Okay, so the fourth Wednesdays and the work sessions are the second Wednesdays, which are quarterly, which will be specified when we get to the regular meeting.
And the two papers.
And then the newspapers, the Suffolk Times and the News Review. I'm just going to comment because I can't help myself, only because we don't have any choice.
Yeah.
Sorry. Is there a motion for those designations?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There really isn't an alternative, is there?
News ad, but that's extremely cost prohibitive.
And it's not...
And it really doesn't get to our local people.
And if you need to advertise in those, in the Times for positions, you do that anyway, right? Okay.
Which is for, like, legal notices and the budget and stuff like that?
And budget, you know, budget information, legal notice.
Do you envision a time where it doesn't have to be in print?
I hope so, because it costs an enormous amount of money to do it in English and in Spanish.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I wonder.
Patty, what does that cost? That's interesting.
Over $3,000.
Really?
Yeah.
A year.
A year.
And we're required to post it?
Four times, you have to have it in English and in Spanish.
Wow.
But yet, if we put it on our website, which is free and open to everybody with an internet connection.
We need to change the law.
If you look at the paper, it's all legal notices.
I know.
And full-page ads.
And you know how they're like, because now we have to go into a portal and load it in ourselves.
So...
So they don't do anything.
They really don't do anything and we're paying...
That's how the papers are doing it now in New York, so.
They'll change it.
Yeah.
It just hasn't changed.
I would hope that eventually, that...
It will.
Scott makes a great point. If it's on the website, then it's open to all the community, never mind.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, let's ask the reporter in the audience. What do you think?
For many years, there was a reporter at every meeting.
Yep.
How many years, about three?
When Julie Lane retired.
No, there was the other younger...
The younger, the graduated from Mythica.
Yeah, and even, there were a couple of, and...
When Mr. Wagner stopped.
Now they look on social media and they report the news from social media. Oh, I'm so bad, I'm going to get in trouble for that. Authorizations, Chief School Officer to certify payrolls, Chief School Officer to approve budget transfers consistent with fiscal policy, application for federal and state funds is the Chief School Officer, District Treasurer to establish a $100 petty cash fund. Is that even necessary at this point? Chuck, we talked about it last year, is it?
It's one of those emergency type.
You need it, you want it, okay, okay.
$100 bucks? We're going to get a pint of coffee.
I was going to say, should it be increased? It's really my, okay. Authorization for single signature on checks $10,000 or under either Jenny.
Scheid.
Or Charles Scheid, and superintendent's signature as a second on all non-payroll checks over $10,000. In the absence of the superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent for business assigned. Are these numbers realistic these days?
They're still pretty good.
Okay. Yeah, you guys are comfortable with those?
Yeah.
Chief School Officer to authorize conferences, conventions, workshops, attendance, authorization for Assistant Superintendent for Business to make investments of school funds, authorization for Monistat Services, Inc. to act for the district as dissemination agent for annual S.E.C. filing, authorization for the Board President to appoint impartial hearing officers on behalf of the Board to meet time requirements, authorization for the following people to be signatories on the extracurricular accounts, Eric Keel, Charles Scheid, Terrence Rush, Ellen O'Neil. Is there a motion to accept those authorizations?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bonding of personnel. Resolve that the district maintains a blanket bond with a $1 million per-loss limit for employee dishonesty for all district employees and designated agents as written by New York State Schools Insurance Reciprocal for the period beginning July 1, 2023, and ending July 30, 2024, be and hereby is approved. Is there a motion for the bonding?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Other items. Readoption of all policies, authorization and code of ethics in effect during the previous year, appointment of superintendent to make residency determinations, file IRS standard mileage rate for business, establish the tuition rate for new Suffolk students that shall increase at the annual South Old School tax levy increase, establish a meal allowance of a maximum of $45 per day for reimbursement, receipts acceptable to the Assistant Superintendent of Business must be attached to the expense factor for reimbursement, establish substitute teacher rate for certified teachers at $135 a day and non-certified teachers at $125 a day, nurse substitute rate at $150 a day, establish other substitute rates for teacher assistants, teacher aides, clerk typists, and custodians at 25 cents less the starting hourly rate in the current C.S.E. contract. Is that the going rate for subs in our area before we go further?
They're about, you know, they're about that area.
Okay. Okay. Because I know we have trouble getting them and I don't know, we're having trouble because our rate's not in line with the surrounding school districts.
It's a universal problem.
It's not. The highest-paid districts are having several, you know, those districts are paying nearly $200 a day.
Okay.
And they're having trouble getting subs.
And, you know, I don't like to spend money better.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Now would be the time to make the change, I guess.
Well, we did update them.
That's what I thought last year.
We updated a little this year just because the C.S.E.A. contract goes up every year. So what happens is you have, you have to up the other ones a little bit to keep them consistent.
Right, relative.
Relative to where they should be, yeah.
Establish an out-of-district proctoring rate at $125 a day, establish rate for translation for C.S.E.s and parent-teacher conferences, $2.10 for a full day, $1.05 for a half day, and establish rate for election workers at a daily rate of $112. Is, okay, is there a motion to accept?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this brings us to our regular meeting, so we welcome all our visitors at this time. I guess nobody's going to, nobody cares to address the board. The first item is our consent agenda, which is the approval of our minutes, our financial matters, and our C.S.E.s. I actually have one question. Well, I probably had more than one. I noticed on the extra classroom activity, the bank account, that there were chargebacks for insufficient funds. And then, but there weren't insufficient funds, and there was one for $175 and one for $180? And I don't need to know, I'm just angry if the bank is charging us...
Right, I think, obviously, the one, but the, right, so that's, those are checks we receive and those are bounced, right? That's not huge.
And for all the money that we have in that account, the banks won't waive that?
Well, it's coming from the...
So this is, this is the check, not a fee?
Um, we, I think...
Yeah, so those are the checks.
Those are the check amounts that bounced.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought they were fees and I...
Payments to us?
They were payments to this class.
That had to be for like, because it's extracurricular, so some, and we got those money back for those?
Jess had emailed.
For those bounced checks? Because I probably should, I mean, it's just, I think it's a lot of money. I think that was my only question on those. Does anyone else have any questions about the consent agenda? I'm going to, there's some contracted services included in here, Metrotherapy, MSK LLC, Integra E-Rate Processing, Omni 403B, and be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes and approves certain stipulation of agreement being entered into what the parents of a student may note to the Board, which involves outside special placement. This also includes our health and welfare agreement with Pecanic Community School for this past school year, correct? Nine students in the...
With Riverhead.
With Riverhead.
Yeah.
Riverhead School District, because they go to Pecanic Community School. And then we're surplusing, gosh, we're surplusing textbooks from probably your time, Tom.
They weren't used.
Yeah, probably not. And there are some C.S.E.s as well. Are there any questions or comments? A motion to accept?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All business? Superintendent's Report, Dr. Morrow.
So, we started our summer work. We have some roof work going on, a lot of cleaning work and maintaining work. We don't have the big projects like tennis courts that we had last year, but, you know, a lot of, when you walk around our buildings, you can see the condition that they're in, and a lot of that large work gets done over the summer every year, stripping, cleaning, and then resealing floors, repainting, touching up everything, repairing anything that's been broken, so our guys are working hard at that. We also had our summer camp start today. I got a chance to walk over and see the kids. It was a little bit light, which we expected, being that it's the holiday weekend running into it, but the kids were really excited. It's amazing to me that a week off and they're back and excited. I don't know if you would have got me to come back to school during the summer, but they, you know, our people do a great job of them, the people that are working with them. You know, we're offering music, arts and crafts, STEM activities, and numerous different sports activities. So it's nice to have, it's nice to see, and, you know, schools get very quiet over the summer, so you get to take a walk over there and hear a lot of yelling and screaming and whatever, which is the enjoyable part of the day. So, you know, I wish everybody a happy summer, and, you know, I hope when you come back, you know, you get an opportunity to look and see at some of the work that our guys and gals have put in over the summer in getting things prepared for next year.
What are some of the projects? Because there was big transfer amounts for projects. Is there anything in particular, or was it?
So we're doing...
Chuck knew I was going to ask that question.
We're doing the remainder of the roof over on the gym, you know, the pieces. We do roof work every, almost every year. Yeah, and, I mean, the nice part about that is we don't run into millions of dollars of roof work, you know, so we're doing a big chunk of roof work.
None of this roof work was under warranty from... John, remember when we did major roof work and...
I do.
And was there not, like, a warranty period? It was, I think it was before Brian was on the building.
I don't remember getting much warranty, a lot of it was old, a lot of it was... I can tell you that they're, yeah, they're really good with their warranties, because we check them, and typically, we're three to five years out of the warranty when we have to do the roof work. When the roof blew up... And, you know, flat roofs. Yeah. Or flat roofs. Unfortunately, that's, yeah, flat roofs on old buildings. And have been expanded many times, you know, they're just, yeah, they just don't work for that long, I mean, unfortunately.
It'd be very expensive.
Addiction. Oh, yeah, betrosten.
Yeah, really.
It's a big job.
So it's, you know, this is really routine maintenance that we do, and it's done within our budget, and it's, you know, Anthony does an excellent job of planning and he works with Chuck to make sure that we can fund it within our capital work, within our budget, or, you know, sometimes we do repairs with it. You know, so we're doing roof work, we're doing door work, which we talked about, and we approved doing some of that from repair reserve. Some of it, we did pull out of our budget, you know, when we had a little bit of money left in capital, you know, in our custodial budget, we're doing that. But we're doing a lot of door work, because we had a lot of door work to do, both interior, when it comes to just, there were a lot of doors that we don't have access points on. So when we go to lockdown systems, those doors don't lock down, unless they're manually locked. For instance, the doors in this room, when we get to the point where all of our doors have the correct access system, then at the push of a button, that we will end up having in certain places in this building, every door will be locked in the building.
So if we had to do a lockdown, it would be like a one button?
One button will send an announcement and lock down every door.
And the, both buildings or just this?
It'll be in both. Until we...
Not far away from that, are we?
We're not as far, uh, as a lot of other places, because we had a lot of door access in the district being put in over the last handful of years. Where, where we chose not to do it, and I don't really, um, I don't know what the rat, it was a, it was typical of what people did in schools, like, we didn't put it on bathrooms. Um, bathrooms need to have it, because kids are in bathrooms when you lock down buildings. And if, if you put locks on the inside of a bathroom door, then when you don't have a lockdown, kids can lock the door. And then, and, you know, the last thing you really want is a child locking themselves in a bathroom, and you don't have access to get in. Uh, so putting dead bolts on and things like that, which are some of the solutions districts have come up with, don't really work. So, you know, you need an electronic access in the bathroom, in the gym, and a lot of places that we didn't really have them, like, we replaced our locker room doors, and they now have accesses on them, because that's where the kids shelter in there.
Do you replace the door or the lock set?
It depends on, um, it depends on how old it is. You know, in some cases, they can put, uh, the lock set right on, you know, with the access point. In other cases, for instance, the, uh, girls' locker room, uh, door where the kids sheltered, it was beyond repair. You know, you would've been putting an expensive access point on a broken door. Um, you know, so it depends on the situation. Anthony worked with a door expert who came around, they walked around, and they checked every door in the district inside and out, and came up with a plan on replacing them. And in some cases, it's structural, like in the gym here. Our doors are really not that old, and they're not in such bad shape, but the framings on them have, have deteriorated to the point where they sag, and the framing needs to be repaired. Otherwise, the doors will never work correctly. They don't close correctly, no matter what you do. Um, so there's a lot of that type of work going on.
And that's replacement and not repairs, so there's that fine line between.
It's a combination. So replacement, we do with, uh, budget transfer, and we do with capital. Repair, which is some of them, some of them just need new closes and things like that. The, the doors themselves are in fairly good shape, the frames are in fairly good shape, but they don't close, because the closer on it is, is antiquated or old, and that's a repair, you know, so it's a combination of them. Uh, what other projects do we have going on?
Playground.
Oh, we're, um, the elementary playground.
Oh, I saw the, what?
Yeah. So the elementary playground is pretty much crater ridden, um, at this point in time, so that's going to be fully blacktopped and repainted, and then we are, uh, repainting all the, the lines and, and, uh, the parking lots, um, you know, around the whole building, um, around the whole district. Uh, what else?
I think second floor, the walls and lockers.
Um, we're, we're, um, yeah, we had, we had.
Anti-coating.
Yeah, we had sealed the coating down here, but we didn't want to do the coating on the second floor yet, because we had old antiquated lockers that we knew we were going to be removing and replacing. So, um, we're doing the locker project and the walls. Most of that probably won't be done until a shutdown during the school year, but we're having all of the pre-work, you know, the measurements, and, you know, they don't, they don't really store lockers for you, you know, you can't get them here.
What about these lockers on this floor?
Same, yeah, we're gonna, yeah.
Literally from when I was, and that was?
Yeah, uh, we're replacing, we're replacing most of the lockers in the entire building. We're going,
Right, I mean.
Going with over-under lockers, um, which are wider. You know, these ones are very narrow. They were from before the materials that you have now, and, you know, you can hang a jacket in them and stuff like that.
The junior high wing as well, those?
Many of, well, the, any of the ones that need to be replaced, yeah. Um, we have, we probably have, Terrence and, um, Anthony went through and counted lockers multiple times. We have hundreds of extra lockers, more than what we need. So some banks will be coming out, and it will be just sheet rocked and, and sealed. We won't be replacing, and then in many of the others, we will. Um, and we're doing it throughout the entire building.
Because I think the kids, one of the biggest complaints you hear from the students is that they're not user-friendly for the students.
They're not.
Especially if I know, the, the junior high, the middle school kids, it's, they're.
I don't think my kids ever use them.
They're close to impossible.
Kids don't use them as much as they used to, but then the fact is, some of the kids that want to use them don't, because the lockers are literally sixty, seventy years old.
And they can't fit.
Yeah, so we're doing a locker project in the entire building. Um, a lot of the legwork.
Maybe at our August meeting, we, we can meet early and do a walkthrough of the, the building.
Yeah.
So Tom could also see some of that and stuff.
So the lockers probably won't be done until shutdown, um, because they have to come in, and they're going to come in and do all the measuring and everything.
There's a break, is that?
A break, one of the breaks, yeah. So one of the breaks, uh, they'll come in, just like the, the coating on all these flo, walls was done on the breaks, yeah. Um, you know, so, um, we can plan for our last board meeting in the summer to walk through and look at all the different projects, uh, you know, that we have done in the last couple of years, and then even show you some of the ones that will be done during the year. And then, um, we're looking at windows in our middle school, which are our probably most neediest window project, you know. Um, so they're all, um, it looks like, I remember when Mike came in, when we met, he said he lo, it looks like they're all custom, like, none of them are really, they're all different sizes.
I think I tell it was about that.
Yeah, you know, they're all, which makes it very difficult in replacing, because you can't buy fifty stock windows.
Something happened in that hallway down there, I believe, that was the same, you know.
Yeah, it's very, it's an, it's an interesting, uh, that and the roof of the middle school are probably the two next projects, right? Uh, the windows and the roof in the middle school. The roof on the middle school is pitched, and that's really what saves it, because that roof is years out of warranty. Uh, it's one of our older roofs.
There are leaks, I would imagine.
Excuse me?
We do have leaks.
Uh, we, we don't have leaks. We don't have any substantial leaks at all.
Shouldn't have said that, I feel like.
It rains.
You know, we're, we're also looking into, they have some different products, like, they have a seal.
A whole seal?
They have a seal that you can put on top of the whole roof without ripping everything off of it. It, it's, you know, it's chemical now, and it's, puts a sealed coat on the entire thing. The warranty on it is pretty much the same as the new roofs.
Checking material, you know, that all.
Yeah, you know, so we're looking at a couple of different products for that, to see what we can do, which will be the mo, least intrusive, uh, on the district, so.
I know you get a lot done over the summer.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, they do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That brings us to personnel. Of course, this is the meeting where we do have a lot of personnel, and I try, I apologize ahead of time, because you know I'm going to get the names wrong. I do my best. Okay, employees entering the district part-time temporary. Uh, Joe Carrato, Social Studies, Nicole Hough, Math, Lori Marham, Health, Summer Enrichment Camp, Danielle Henry, Eileen Bracken, Summer Support Services, Karen Burns, Jeanette Cooper, Technology Work, Jason Westnawski, and Eric Keel for Soho TV, Student Job Experience, Nicole Hough, Curriculum Writing, Jason Westnawski, Consolidated, Consolidated Grant Coordinator, Lisa Simonetti, Translation and Interpretation, Miriam Huretis, I know I say that wrong too, I'm sorry, Miriam, SSD Coordinator, Francesca Reardon, PSAT Coordinator, Joseph Crimme, AP Coordinator, Joseph Crimme, ACT Coordinator, Christine Ambriano, SAT Coordinator, Francesca Reardon, Elementary Yearbook, Pam Parmer, Elementary Student Council, Patty Melus, Math Coordinator, Sam Martheim, Elementary Talent Show, Karen Kerkowski and Leah Leonard, Steam Fair, Deb Kimmelman and Ken Mayer, Elementary Assessment Coordinator, Marlene Buffkins and Kevin McGowey, Elementary Accommodations Coordinator, Marlene Buffkins, Elementary and Nice, yeah, Coordinator, Marlene Buffkins, Garden Coordinator, Deb Kimmelman, Elementary Play Club, Julie Fogarty, Lisa Finney, Kate Panetta, Renetta Coppola, Sue Rogers, High School and Middle School Assessment Coordinator, Heather Gearing and Eric Keel, High School and Middle School Accommodations Coordinator, Christine Ambriano, High School and Middle School.
Nicest.
Nicest Coordinator, Miriam Huretis, Huretis, Middle School Lead Teacher, Mike Carver, PM Supervision, Heather Gearing, After School Detention, Christine Ambriano and Deb Dibble, Music Accompanists, Kelly Baumann and Jennifer Kennedy. Um, and I'll go through these really quickly. The twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, the Junior Senior High School Advisors, Senior Class, Elwood, I'm just going to do last names, Elwood Rooney, Junior Class, Santiago, Jess, I should put the name for that one, right? Okay. Sophomore Class, Brew Baker, Freshman Class, Ambriano, High School Student Council, Galano and Tahara, Junior High Student Council, Carver, High School Yearbook, Gosnell, Junior High Yearbook, Governell, Founding Voices, Rooney, Interact, Salmaji, Early Act, Mara, Musical Drama Club, Elwood Rooney Baumann, South Old United, Santiago Jess, Quiz Ball, Long Island Child, Challenge, Santiago Ivan, High School National Honor Society, Stahl, Select Choir, Baumann, Jazz Band, Kimmelman, Sentinel, Chamber Orchestra, TBD, First Robotics, Lego, Shade Gammon, Junior High Robotics Two, Safer, Johnson Ambriano, Environmental Club, Berberick, Johnson, Broadcast Media Club, Westnawski, Wellness Club, Salmaji, School Ambassador Club, Johnson, Film Club, Westnawski, Chess Club, Santiago Ivan, International Club, Bal, Balsiar, did I say it right?
Balkasar.
Balkasar and Mayer. Is there a motion to accept those so far?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Coaching, for the Fall twenty twenty-three Season, Boys Varsity Cross Country, Carl Himam, I'll do last names, Himam, and Girls Varsity Cross Country, McKeon, Boys and Girls Junior High Cross Country, Palmari, Girls Varsity Tennis, Carver, Girls JV Tennis, Small, Girls Junior High Tennis, TBD, Boys Varsity Soccer, Sadowski, Boys Varsity Assistant, Gregonis, Boys JV Soccer, Sinclair, Boys Junior High Soccer, Rugby, Girls Junior High Soccer, Salerno. Winter, and again, some of these are going to be determined as we go along the year, Girls Varsity Competitive Cheer, Berry, Boys Varsity Basketball, Gregonis, Boys JV Basketball, TBD, Boys Junior High Basketball, Seven Ellis, Eight Salerno, Girls Junior High Basketball, Seven Ellis, Eight Palmari, Junior High Wrestling, Salerno, Varsity Bowling, Sinclair, Junior High Girls Va, Va, Volleyball, Seven, if needed, we don't know, to be determined, right? Junior High Girls Volleyball, Eight, Salmaji, Girls Varsity Winter Track, Carrata, Spring twenty twenty-four, Boys Varsity Baseball, Tully, TBDs, Assistants, JV and Junior High, Varsity Softball, Girls Varsity Softball, Graziano, Varsity Assistant, Kane, JV Softball and Junior High Softball, TBD, Boys Varsity Tennis, Sadowski, Boys JV Tennis, Shoro, Girls Varsity Specialty Track, McCardle, Boys Varsity Specialty Track, Carrato, Boys JV Track, Nikolov, Girls JV Track, Heine, Boys Junior High Track, Palmari, Girls Junior High Track, Davis. Let's do those, because those are the coaching, right? I think I got them. Motion to accept?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Yeah. Um, so these are additional positions for the coming school year. Baseball Statician, TBD, Scoreboard Operators, Alex Sinclair, Dave Rydel, John Palmari, Scoreboard Operator, Girls and Boys Soccer, Salerno, Scoreboard Operator, Girls and Boys Basketball, Ellis, Carver, Scoreboard Operator, Boys and Girls Junior High Basketball, Sadowski, Salerno, Scoreboard Operator, Junior High Volleyball, Salerno, Sadowski, Scoreboard for Soccer, TBD, Morning Weight Room, Carrato, Morning Weight Room, Middle School, Palm, Palmari, I should emphasize Carrato was high school. Summer Weight Room, to be determined. The substitute list is extensive, which I will not read every name, Substitute Aides, Substitute Bus Drivers, Substitute Custodians, and Tutors. Um, and then the last one is the Safety Committee Members. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a status change. Marlene Buffkins says rescinded her intent to retire effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, a contract amendment for Dr. Morrow through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, and I know there's the amendment, which was Kristin Deriggin, which is on one of these papers, and I want to get it. Okay, thank you. Kristin Gar, Deriggin is going to extend her FMLA through December, coming back January second, twenty twenty-four. And then the non-union benefits, the Board affirms that it will continue to grant vacation leave, insurance, and longevity benefits provided to the contract between the South Old Board of Education and the South Old CSEA to the following non-union employees, District Clerk, District Treasurer, and Secretary to the Superintendent. These non-union employees shall also be eligible for salary increases during the final year of employment, compensation for unused sick and vacation time upon retirement, and for permanent attendance as specified in the contract with the CSEA. The salary for these positions shall be determined annually upon recommendation of the Superintendent approval by the Board of Education. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. And then we've got our meeting dates. I'm not going to read each of them. We, I, I guess we, do we have to decide that April one now, Patty?
Um.
Let's explain that so Tom at least understands. That and the July one, I know you sent us, and maybe with the holiday, we didn't have time to reply. So, we have to vote on a BOSI's budget every year. It's always either the day before, it's a universal day for them, and it falls, never.
Yeah, I kind of figured that.
Okay. So what are our choices there, Patty, on that one?
Our choices are have our regular meeting on the seventeenth, and then just have a short special meeting where a quorum can come and show up and, and we can just adopt the BOSI's budget or not. Or we can move the regular meeting to Tuesday instead of Wednesday.
I have problems with Tuesday, only because I have rotary meetings on Tuesday.
So, I mean, what's? I didn't, I can't see any problem.
Getting, getting three of us together.
Never had a problem walking in, taking the thirty seconds.
Okay, so we'll leave it on the?
So there'll be two, there'll be a sixteen.
And a seventeen.
Okay, right, okay.
And then for the reorg, um.
I think the tenth makes sense.
The tenth would probably, and that falls into the state's regulations.
It does, because you can set a date by the board.
By the board, even if it's?
Yeah, because I know a lot of them were doing it on the eleventh this year, so.
Okay, okay. So does that work for everybody, the tenth versus July third, right? That works for you guys? Okay, so a motion to accept those dates with the seventeenth of April and July tenth is the reorg next year.
And the sixteenth is BOSI's.
And the sixteenth will be a special meeting for the BOSI's.
That should say twenty-four, right?
Oh, you're right, Tom. Good pickup. Ooh, new board member. Ooh, he gets a raise.
The last one.
The last one should say twenty twenty-four.
This time's a zero.
Is there a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The District-wide Safety Plan, which we all received a copy of, we need a motion to accept that.
Weird, it's just informational.
Oh, it's informational.
We have to present it.
Oh, and then we have to, in thirty days.
Yeah.
So at our August meeting.
Right.
That, we will accept that.
Shared and posted now.
And it's on the website now.
It's on the website.
Yep.
So if anybody has anything to say, they should bring it to next meeting, and then we'll vote on it and probably.
Yes.
School Meal Prices, Elementary Breakfast is going from one sixty to one seventy, Elementary Lunch from two forty to two fifty, Junior High, Junior Senior High Breakfast from one sixty to one seventy, and the Junior Senior High Lunch from two fifty to two sixty. I want to come here and eat breakfast and lunch. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And those motions, I mean, I think it's fair to point out that those amounts are determined by our food, um, the company that RMR, how come we didn't have them on the agenda?
We've gone out for, they're due for.
Oh, a bid. Okay, so we'll do that at our next meeting then.
But these, these prices are really set by New York State Child Nutrition. Because we get federal and state funding.
They set it.
They require that we raise the price a minimum of ten cents, but every couple, every few years we, we can, um, there's a lot of big work in forms where I can keep the price flat, I have to prove certain things. So basically, we raise it every couple of years. Like, so it's requiring the child nutrition, I mean, more of the state, federal funding.
So we went out for bid for the food service, but there, isn't there only one company out there?
It's required every.
Yeah.
Oh.
Well. Bus service.
You know, we, we did have a couple. There's one company that claims to be, uh, more nutritious. We spoke to them.
Are they new?
They're, they're new, they're not, they have some Long Island, some New York City, some Boston, you know, they're a newer company. Whether they'll bid on us in a way that's meaningful, we don't know, till the RFP goes out. Um, now, I can also tell you that, um, the company we're working with now, we met with them, they changed our supervisor, and they have, um, you know, we, we spoke with them, with our Wellness Committee, uh, about some of our concerns, and they've really stepped up the last half of the year. They started baking fresh biscuits in the mornings.
They were better than the previous one, though, remember, Chuck? The prev, right? I mean, they really came to the tape.
Yeah, well, they, yes. My, yeah, my understanding was when you left the old one and came to this one, it was because they were better.
They were better, considerably better.
Yeah, see, during the pandemic, though, a lot of that dropped off, because there wasn't an opportunity to do many of these things, you know. Now we have a sandwich station, we have a wrap station, we have all these things that they're working on putting in, and some of that was, they gave us a new manager who's really, um, I mean, she communicates with you even more than me, but she's very on top of things. Um, they've agreed to use the food from our garden in the spring, in the, um, fall, you know, um, in both of our cafeterias.
They had agreed to that when we first hired them, didn't they, Chuck?
They did, and then somehow during the pandemic, that got lost, and they were, and, you know, they were no longer doing it, and the manager that we were working with was under the impression they weren't doing it. Um, the new person that Chuck and I met with has been very open to doing smoothies and, um, fresh soups utilizing, you know, um, farm-to-table, um, you know, materials, even our own, from our own, um, farm. So, yeah, I'd say the last half of the year, sales went up tremendously, because they improved the product a great deal. Um, and we got a lot of really good feedback from our students, and even from some of our, our faculty and staff that started to eat down there. Um, yeah, so we're hoping to continue seeing that improvement, and they tell us if they're back, you know, if they're the group that's back with us, um, they plan on, you know, trying, they bring in a nutritionist, and, you know, uh, they'll come in and try, like, you know, they'll do fajitas, like, these healthy fajitas one day, and they bring in a, um, an actual, a chef, who's not one of our employees, who comes to the different places, and he works with our employees on how to cook these things for the kids, and then they can continue adding that to the menu if it works well.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, back, you know, a few administrations ago, in the government, there were requirements set on school district that took federal funding, that you could only offer meals with so many calories and?
A lot of that's still in place.
That's still in place, right?
But you can offer significantly better than what we had when I first came. And again, that was pandemic time, so it was bagged lunch, it was no choices.
Oh, yeah, they were outside on the tables, just, yeah.
Yeah, kids couldn't walk up and put together a sandwich, or they couldn't walk up and say, can I have this, and this, and this, and, you know, can I have that, uh, you know, that, uh, fresh this on there, and like, there was, there was no ability to do that. They're back to doing that now. Um, and, and part of that was, we're not in a pandemic, and part of it really was, the new person that came in, um, to work with us.
Interested in making it better.
You know, was really open to doing those types of things, and we've seen a really nice improvement.
Good. I don't know if we voted, because, I mean, we did vote. I, I had the motion in the second, and we did vote, right? Okay. So we have some NJROTC trips, because only major Congotas could do this in July of the school year. Uh, Basic Leadership Training from October seventh and eighth, Quantico from February twenty, uh, nineteenth to the twenty-first, and Pensacola, Florida, we're not sure of the date, sometime in April. Is there a motion to accept those trips?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have any new business? Policy Committee.
We will be meeting in the summer.
Yeah, we do, right? Okay. Finance? Mr. Tobin?
Chuck, we have to, uh, and.
He probably has to get auditing and?
Right, they came in, they did some interim testing, Colin Danasky, uh, they're set up for the year-end audit, the first week in September, or something. Uh, but it'll be interesting this year, with the Treasurer, the, the work this summer, closing out the books. Um, I think we've done pretty well.
Good. Uh, Building Committee, John?
Uh, we haven't had a meeting in a while. I'm not sure if there's, I know the main issue is the boilers. I don't know, do we, we need to have a meeting this summer, what do you think?
Yeah, I think, I think it might be a good idea to have Mike come in, because there were some different options, one of which turned out, you know, based on our usage. Um, you know, he, he adds, I, I think it might be good for us to sit with him and listen to some of that.
So maybe, um, find out from him.
Yep.
Have him give us a few dates, and then.
Let's do this month, because August, you know, fine, because he's going back to school, fine.
So maybe, maybe sometime at the end of this month.
Sure.
Uh, you know, my schedule is, I'm, I'm off Mondays, and I'm usually, you know, free Thursday afternoons, and, you know, I'm available a lot of evenings. Brian's schedule is probably, you know, because it works, you know, it's going to be tougher, so.
Yeah, probably a few days.
Maybe find out what works for, if, if you, maybe Brian, if you and Tony and our architect can figure out. Maybe find out what works for, if, if you, maybe Brian, if you and Tony and our architect can figure out just two, if you just give me two, then I'll, I should be able to make one of them.
Okay.
Yep.
I guess our second hearing of visitors will be soon as our first hearing of visitors. Board member commentary. Mr. Tobin, since we have no student, usually goes down on their side.
Well, let's start, let's, let's start right-hand from this year.
Yeah, let's start with Mr. Tobin.
Tom.
And then we're going to move our seats too, Patty. Every once in a while, change everybody's seats around. Go, Brian.
Happy summer and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.